It was nice in this today about the uphill.
Thanks for doing that, sure.
The only.
I do.
Sorry.
It's a big.
He sometimes.
And one.
Oh, that little. Anyways. Right. Commentaries might be not. I mean, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Excited about it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I missed a lot of them. Ask them.
Ask maybe.
I'm good.
That's a jewelry weight.
Yeah, it just. I was down.
Yeah. It's. Yeah, he's telling. I had to be turned away.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, let's get started. We're traditional. Right, welcome everybody to the first city council in our new space. It's very exciting to be here. You all for being here with us. Dusty Joe, can we get a roll call? We need that.
Council President Nielsen.
Here.
Councilmember Machethic.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson.
Present.
Councilmember Bower.
Here.
Uh, let the record show that Mayor Giles is action.
Okay, let's stand for. Let's just stay alive. Okay, and it's been the very weekend. And to their own information, what a mission underdone indivisible with liberty is justified. All right, can I get a motion to approve the agenda if everyone is good looking?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second. Moved in second to approve the agenda, all in favor.
Aye.
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 Aries, any changes to the consent agenda?
No.
None.
Bush, motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second, the consent agenda, can I get a roll call?
Councilmember Machethic.
Yes.
Councilmember Thrower.
Yes.
Council President Nielsen.
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yes.
Thanks. Next up is our general public comment. Hey. First up to address the councils, David Gallipoli.
Thank you.
I'm trying to teach him one.
He needs one.
I need somebody play worse.
How's that?
Oh.
Hmm. Wow, that's too fancy. Um, David Gallipoli, thirteen, five eighty-six, farm to market. Science and water studies and county data confirm our waterways are forty-seven percent impaired, with many tributaries above fifty percent and some at eighty-five. I don't understand why this council and our county commissioners ignore the recommendations from our Valley County Waterways Management Plan, North Fork Payette River Coalition, Valley County Soil and Water, Friends of Lake Cascade, and the recent twenty twenty-three Payette Lake Report. While many factors contribute to our waterways, water quality issues, power boats, especially wake boats, are harmful to Payette Lake. Power boats increase greenhouse gases, emissions, erode shorelines, destroy aquatic insects, native plant life, fish habitat, and increased milfoil blooms. The science is clear about how damaging wake boats are to inland lakes, and many states have taken action to restrict and limit them, especially on a sole source of drinking water. In the near term, I would hope you would limit the power of, the limit power boats to five days a week on Payette Lake and increase the wake boat zone to five hundred feet from shore, although many studies recommend one thousand feet. Every year, eighty million pounds of fertilizers and pesticides are applied to lawns and gardens in the U.S. These chemicals adversely impact pollinators, aquatic wildlife, birds, pets, us, and other mammals. It's time to ban harmful chemicals that are getting into our waterways. We should consumer, consider limits on subdivision sprawl and buildings close to our waterways that contribute to non-point pollution runoff until we have the data on the impacts of more growth near our waterways. Implement CW five specific visions, countywide objective in the waterways plan. We need to increase monitoring and testing of our waterways, especially for PFOS, that's forever chemicals, and Didamo, an invasive algae found on other rivers in Idaho that can kill aquatic insects and fish and make fishing and other activities undesirable. Increase enforcement to protect our waters. I have floated the North Fork of the Payette the last few years with the Trout Unlimited chapter to pick up trash. I observed blatant disregard by construction companies and property owners to control the runoff. I saw many pipes entering the river and lawns growing up to the river. When Dr. Wilhelm presented his findings on Payette Lake in twenty twenty-four, he asked an audience of residents, county, and city officials a simple question. Why would we not do everything we can to protect our sole source of drinking water? I ask, why would we not do everything we can to protect all our waterways in Valley County? Thank you.
My souvenir speaking about the airport. Nick.
Thanks, I'm Rick Faraday, three for, three fifteen Burns Road in McCall. I'd like to say I agree with everything David said, super critical. But I'd like to refer now to your City of McCall housing strategy dated twenty eighteen and the subsequent study in twenty twenty-two on affordable housing and housing for, uh, that's affordable, yeah. So, uh, there was an implementation plan in that twenty eighteen strategy, and there were more than six, but I'm gonna list six. Number one, the urban renewal development, uh, we were talking about a new urban renewal district at the time, and that's done. I don't think there's any, any talk of affordable housing or anything done with affordable housing in that yet. Correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, land banking for affordable housing, I believe that's zero. Uh, creative micro and tiny house development, not sure, I don't know of any. Uh, inclusionary housing ordinance. Uh, I believe that some aspects of that were done, but not a lot. Uh, expedite approvals for price restricted projects. I know there's been talk about that in P and Z and at staff level. I don't know how many, how many units have come forth with that. Hopefully, somebody could tell me that. And now the one that should have been at the top of this list. Uh, sales tax slash local option tax, nothing has been done on that to address affordable housing. Uh, but now you want to expand the streets LOT another percent to go towards improving infrastructure. How many millions has the city spent on the streets and et cetera in the last seven years? And how much money has been saved or land banked for affordable housing? I think you know the answer to that, and it's, uh, I don't know what the figures are, but you, the council, should, and I would bet that it's a gigantic chasm between those two figures from almost zero to twenty million? I don't know. Uh, so, look, you've got a great staff here at the city. Uh, they've done the work, it's sitting on the shelf. You as council people have failed to fund that study that I know you paid a bunch of money for. I believe you sat on that, Mike, did you not? The twenty twenty-two, maybe you didn't, okay. Uh, so, so that's the number one problem. It's not roads, it's not sewer, it's not infrastructure, it's housing. Please fund it now. Don't kill the local option tax option by giving it to streets. Not that I'm against streets and all that, we gotta have streets, but you guys need to look at what's important here. And by the way, I looked at that twenty eighteen study on housing, a hundred and seventy dollars a square foot to build a house.
Didn't receive the public comment. See those.
Uh, no, I did have somebody request to make comment this evening. My viewers. Wow, morning.
Hey. I don't want. Um, up next is our report. A C.
So for those of you who don't know me, I'm Mike Weiss, I'm the chairman of the Airport Advisory Committee, and this is your annual report. And I really am happy to, first of all, I want to thank you for your support for the airport. Um, I know it's mutual because the airport does a lot to support the community as well, but we do appreciate it. Also, I want to commend the airport staff, Emily, Danner, and Jerry do a fabulous job. And Emily's done a really great job in moving things forward. I've been flying to McCall for thirty-five years, lived here full-time for about twenty, and, um, and I've seen things happen in the last couple of years that I hadn't seen happen for thirty years before, such as the infield development, which is, we have like fifty pilots trying to get hangars and it's empty space. It's a win-win because you guys get, um, get tax revenues and leasehold fees and things and, and also, um, it's, the pilots, it brings in more business for the community related to the pilots and so on, so, so everybody wins when we have it, and you can't leave a plane just sitting out on the, if in the winter up here, you have to have a hangar. So it's really wonderful, and we now have one new hangar there, and there's seventeen more contracts have been, uh, engineering contracts have been done in terms of site development, they've put in the sewer line extension there, so it's moving along. We're really hoping to have at least seventeen smaller hangars built, plus a few bigger hangars in that infield area, which will bring a lot to the city and to the community. So we're really excited about that. Like I said, more has happened in the last couple of years than had happened in the previous thirty, and we've been talking about this forever. Um, that's what they call the small hangar development, that's the seventeen hangars, and they'll be sold and they'll be paying taxes on those and so on. Um, we do occasionally have noise complaints about the airport, and we deal with those in the A R A C. Uh, there's actually an FAA protocol for that, and we ask people to complete that when they come to us, and we'll, we're happy to discuss it with them and try and, and deal with it if there are violations or, we like people to be considerate of it, too. We try and leave our noise to the south by, by landing, coming from the south and taking off to the south, so it keeps the noise down in the town. Um. In terms of other things that have been happening there, um, we talked about the infrastructure already. Uh, both these and, uh, landing fees have been adjusted for the rate for the lease and landing fees. Uh, we have contracted with, I think it's Vectors, the name of the company, which uses a, a radio transmitter from airplanes to bill before people, I know it's hard to believe people would land here and then not pay the required fees. You think if you can afford an airplane, you don't stiff an airport for six bucks for a small plane and bigger amounts of money for bigger planes, but this company devised a method to track the identifying beacons from airport, airplanes and, and then send them the bill, look at that, look up their owner online and send them the bill, and it's, uh, we've actually have a general, generated a stream of income, it's not been as much as we had hoped, and I can't remember the exact number, it's like twenty thousand dollars? Oh, so we're, it's, it's more than we ever had or ever dreamed to have, actually, so it, it's really terrific. Um, and that seems to be working out pretty well so far, we don't know for sure. Um. We've had to update our rules in accordance with the requirements. Um, we've updated emergency procedures, which we've had a few. Um, Emily did the book, and unfortunately she was away when we had a jet coming in here with landing gear up, and they were following procedures, they were able to send them someplace else, we would not be able to deal with that very well. A gear up landing at McCall would be, probably close the airport for a while. Uh, speaking of which, uh, we have had to deal, I don't know if you're aware of this, but McCall Airport has what's called an I F R, instrument of flight rules approach. It is the only one in Valley County, Adams County, Boise County, and Gem County. The next closest one is Weezer, okay? So planes that have to come in on instrument approaches, and most of the bigger planes do, actually, the approach begins over Cascade Reservoir and comes from the south. Um, most of those planes would not be able to utilize this airport if we didn't have it, and all the area around us that we serve. Uh, we have had people try and, and make, you know, some of the trees to the north violate airspace requirements for procedures for the FAA, it has to be certified by them, and it's quite a procedure, but it potentially could close down, and we lose that approach. So that would really impact the ability of planes, some of the lifeline planes to get in here when, when the weather's bad, or some of the bigger planes in terms of the uh, people that come here for vacations or second homes and so on. So that's, um, a really important thing, and we've been, we've dealt with that. I had to speak at a hearing down at the county board, if someone had wanted to put a, another airfield close to the airport, that would have probably closed our, we would have lost our I F R approach. So we followed that. Um, Emily's applied for, for grant money, I think there was money from COVID called CARES Grant, which was received. We're dealing with the issue of the diner lane, which affects, you know, they, they moved it years ago, but it still, um, uh, impacts the, the, uh, the, it's the call to go around for the, for the I F R approaches where they have to go around, and also coming in, it's not perfect, and we'd like to move it again, but I'm not sure, that's not gonna be easy, we know that. And I think, uh, that, that's about it. So like I said, the, the community of the airport is working pretty well together. Um, Emily works well with, uh, like Do Aviation, which is our, our mechanic group that has their offices or facilities behind McCall Aviation. Do Aviation was worried about losing their space, and they had, uh, put a bid on some land next to the energy office, but they, they're much more at home and comfortable now where they're at, secure, so that's been purchased back by the city to get that piece of property back. Um, the other providers, uh, I don't know if you know who Mike Doris is, he does sawtooth aviation, he, he was, uh, inducted at the Idaho Aviation Hall of Fame. There's three generations that, his, his father, Mike Doris, was one of the first pilots here, not Mike, sorry, uh, Bill Doris. Mike is his son, his brother George is another pilot in the area, and Mike's daughter Katie is flying now in the Idaho backcountry, so, uh, we remain a gateway to the Idaho backcountry. Uh, Lori McNichol runs the, um, McCall Mountain Canyons Flying School, which brings in people from Europe, and also the CIA, and also the Forest Service come to get trained for flying in the backcountry to Little Old McCall. She goes over to, uh, expositions in Europe to recruit people to come here and all over the United States. Um, so it, it works pretty well together. We have base camp helicopter services, and they, they worked for the fires this summer, but also we're working all over the country, and they're based here. So there's a lot going on at the airport. Any of you come out there and would like to get a tour or talk, it reminds me, I almost forgot what the one most important thing, and that's the open house that we have every June, and, uh, we, we have the beaver drop, which has become our, um, our insignia, our, activity, the kids just love it. For those who don't know, it was initially done because it commemorated a thing that actually happened where the Forest Service dropped beavers in boxes from parachutes into the backcountry to reintroduce beavers, and it worked, and the beavers weren't killed or anything, and they, boxes become open and they'd go out and do that. So we, for the fiftieth anniversary of it, we simulated that, no be, no real beavers were used. But the, the thing, the thing that Emily thought of was we, we had to pin the tail on the airplanes, we had little beaver tails, and kids could come up and pin the tail on it, and whoever came closest to where the beaver landed got the beaver. Well, the kids went nuts about this, I can't, I can't overemphasize that, and, and they were out there watching the beaver drop, and we had a simulation of it, and we, and the Forest Service, um, gave us, built us a parachute, the smoke jumpers, and Emily's dad, I think, built the box, and I don't know where you got the beaver from. Okay, anyway, so we dropped it, and they got it, and just slept with it and went to go, and the second year we did it again, and, and people were coming in, like, some, some older people wanted to like, put the, they were like grandparents, wanted to do it for their grandkid in Florida, we don't allow that, you have to be a kid to do this. Um, and then this year we had the airport engineer come out and use GPS to locate the site, because the kids wanted to be absolutely sure where that beaver landed, so, so it was, it was quite an official act, and it's, it's enjoyed for everybody, we have lots of people from the community coming to the airport, and we always enjoy to show them around and, um, and have, and show, get them interested in aviation. Oh, one other thing, I almost forgot one thing, there's a club on the airport called the McCall Mile High Flying Club, which has a five oh one C three McCall Youth Learning Aviation Fund, which, um, sponsors a scholarship every year for a high school kid who gets a free flight training for a year, membership from the club. Our first student several years ago is now learning how to fly F thirty-fives in the Air Force, having graduated from the Air Force Academy. We have other people who have gone on to aviation careers through that program. We also have a flight simulator that any kid who wants to use can use, although they have to get a student pilot's license, which means they have to be over age fourteen. And, um, and if a kid locally wants to take a, the written test to become a pilot, the local flying club will, actually, the, the Idaho Aviation Association McCall Chapter will reimburse them for the. will reimburse them for the cost of that written test. Fifteen percent if they get an eighty, seventy-five percent if they get an eighty-five, hundred percent if they get a ninety or better on their test. And we also have grants to teachers and recreation people that want to do anything related to uh youth uh learning about aviation. So that's all happening in McCall, which is pretty amazing for a small town in a small airport. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
I have a comment.
Sure.
I think the youth learn to fly program would be a great start news story. Uh youth that goes from fourteen to flying for bad jets or or the different, I mean, there's got to be a number of of stories that really help people understand how much more than just airplanes there for you.
Maybe so. Well, it's, you know, it's it's not just airplanes, it's STEM. I mean, you know, um Rick Stoll, who was a local, he's actually a nationally known educator, maybe internationally an educator and used to live in Cascade, has put together a program for schools teaching about drones. He's and he's put that on here a couple of times and and again, if if a teacher wanted to buy a drone, they all have to ask the McCall Youth Learning Aviation Fund and they can get a grant and we're happy to do that. So I talked to Tara Woods, I'm trying to talk to Tara Woods, she's in recreation, who wants to get money from it. We're trying to connect on that. So we're happy to support that and get people excited about about flying. That's what it's all about.
Okay.
Well, thank you for your attention.
Uh thanks. Some exciting stuff out there.
Yeah, Emily.
Alan, can you step up to the office?
Oh, sorry. We are doing, the communications department has organized all the other city departments to uh do airport tours on the twenty-eighth and there's some seats available. So if anybody would like to join that tour, I'm sure we can make that happen. So get ahold of Molly or Aaron or me if you want to come up.
All right. Uh Michelle, are up first with uh the synopsis of the Marina, upcoming Marina applications.
Good evening, Council. Michelle Grunaveld, Community and Economic Development Director. Um I'm presenting this item for Kurt Wolf, our Parks and Rec Director, who cannot be here because he's doing something really cool and fun. So um basically, this is your first touch on this item and I'll try to answer the questions the best that I can, um or uh our city attorney can also probably help. Um so basically, what this is, um our current Marina owners, Sam and Kelly Worley, um they've been looking and exploring funding mechanisms and options for the Mile High Marina Breakwater and Expansion Project. And basically that led to looking at additional investors for that project. Um so they basically entered into an agreement with Resilient Capital Partners LLC, um who would basically become the majority interest owner in the Marina. Um and then Kelly and Sam would remain as minority owners and they plan on continuing to run and sort of maintain that project. Um so they'll still be involved and I know Kurt talked with um them just this last week um about kind of that commitment to being involved in this project. Um so basically, this this transaction um is a way to provide the funding necessary to complete both the breakwater and the expansion itself. And so um they've cleared the due diligence process and they're now entering into the final closing contingencies, um which are based on the three applications, um which I'll list for you. The application for assignment of the current city lease, number two, the application for consent uh to a leasehold mortgage date of trust, and then lastly, the application for a stop wall certificate. So the current city and state lease run from January first, two thousand eighteen, through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven. Um and then basically, the the lesser can grant the less see the option to renew this lease for an additional ten years. Um and so that is also included, a draft of that is included in your packet. So really, the purpose of this agenda item is to introduce and bring the council up to speed on this new situation in terms of the change in um uh majority minority ownership and this new investor who's um now party to the project. And um and then ultimately to answer any questions or concerns that the council might have prior to bringing back those documents uh in February uh for review and action.
I have uh comments if when we're ready for that.
Go ahead.
Okay, great. Uh and Bill, they they could go or Michelle or and for discussion. But the first one that struck my mind was um uh I'll call it Article Two in the lease agreement, which is uh on page two. And it says, the annual gross rent shall be determined um and by this formula at uh four percent. And I was thinking that when we put the new breakwater in, it's larger, it has, I know they're responsible for maintenance, but will have some more city time um in in terms of meeting our responsibilities that. And so I was just not thinking of, you know, uh our costs, everybody's costs has gone up. So I was just wondering if four percent is still the right uh agreement with them or if we could really rationalize and say, our expense to um with the new facility will be higher also, therefore we should be uh at, you know, I'm just saying five or six percent, just calling that into question. And I have another one, too, but I'll just stop there.
Uh Mr. Counsel President, I think I can answer that question. And the the issue that will be before you in the future is is the assignment of the existing lease and that four percent was an increase from what I think was three percent before. So the four percent was an increase. Um the time to negotiate different terms to address conditions will be when the lease is up for renewal, not for the assignment itself. So it would be in a couple of years when the lease is up for renewal. That's when it would be appropriate to examine the conditions on the ground and see what might um might be appropriate to put into the lease. Um the other thing I would say that's uh not on the agenda bill, but the conditional use permit that was approved for the expansion, then this new entity or new owners will be obligated to comply with all of those conditions that you imposed. And so it would get um all of the things that you had in there about water quality monitoring and other things, that will still apply.
Okay, great. And I think then the second thought would be probably relevant also to the time of renewal, but uh looking at um Article Five, it says um replacing the, I have two things, sorry, I just need, replacing the existing breakwater with your breakwater of similar size and dimension. Um we know what's that that means, but for whatever reason, the the expenses were such that they wanted to do a lesser, does that give me uh to say similar in size, similar in size to the previous log breakwater or um because they're they're not similar size of what we proposed in the.
So um I uh, Mr. President, uh members of the council, this particular uh provision that was in the two thousand seventeen lease is essentially saying uh any additions or expansions of the Marina had to be approved by the city council, which is what happened with the conditional use permit application. And so this um the the issue of the replacing the existing breakwater with a breakwater of similar size and dimension was essentially a recognition that if the Marina was owned, replacing what is the existing breakwater without the expansion, that they wouldn't have to come get permission to replace an existing facility. Uh but if they were going to do any kind of an expansion, they had to come forward and get approval, which is what they did last year.
Great, thanks. This is helpful, right? This one one last thing, if I take the time. Then in that same uh paragraph, uh for attorney, the expansion will be reasonably related to the impact of the additional expansion will have upon Legacy Park and the reasonable public access. You know, that's uh one of the kind of contentious aspects when we approve the expansion is to and and of course, it's in our C U Ps, that the impact is just into on the property itself. And so I'm just thinking in the future, with new data and looking at what is potentially um things we like to mitigate on the lake, if future agreements would be that the impact um would be uh restricted not to the shoreline, uh that the Marina is not responsible for erosion on the shoreline at midlake or midshoreline. Basically, it's and and I think that that's requirement anyhow per se, isn't it? Really, when we look at the permitting process, that that is the limitation.
Uh well, there's a difference between the permitting process and the the lease negotiation process. And so again, you would look at the conditions at the time the lease comes up for for renewal, taking into account any new information that's occurred since the last lease extension was approved, and then negotiate those issues, whatever they might be, um and how that how the Marina. So there is an obligation to proceed in good faith and to deal fairly. And but I think you uh you would look at, what are the conditions today during the time of the renewal and then negotiate from that then. So if if there's been some issue with Marina users conflicting with users of the park, then that's a legitimate issue to discuss in the witness room.
Great, thanks. Clarify it for me.
Questions, comments, concerns?
Okay, great. Thank you.
You are up. Uh so the, you know, money and stuff. Thanks.
Nathan Stewart, Public Works Director. It's my pleasure to be here in this new room presenting to you. It's just a long time getting here and I hope we'll be here for a while. So um tonight before you is a big step in our large water project. Um it's the culmination of a successful bond election. Uh it's the culmination of about a year of thorough evaluation of financing options, uh trying to determine what would be in the best uh city's best interest financially, way to fund this project most economically with the loan options that are available to the city. We looked at private bonding, we looked at the Idaho Bond Bank, um and everywhere we turned, D E Q's offer uh for a state revolving fund, low interest loan, uh was determined to be the most beneficial. So uh council was brought along with that decision and was given given staff the direction to continue to proceed with D E Q financing. Uh that's been now formalized. D E Q provided us their loan offer in early January. Um we met with our legal counsel for the bond specifically. We met with our financial advisor from Zion's Bank, um and all all the information still presented itself with this is the best path forward for the city. So in addition to that, we were encouraged to bring this in front of the council uh in a timely manner as quickly as possible because we cannot submit our design plans to the D E Q uh without finalizing this agreement. So they won't even review our project until the loan agreement's in place. So there's a timing thing here that's I'm going to be ramping up as we go through the late winter and into the spring so that we can be bidding out the different portions of this project. So in front of you tonight is the loan offer. Uh it's been reviewed uh by both our legal counsel as well as bond counsel. Um John McDevitt um from Skinner Fossett, who is our bond counsel, um had some discussions with the D E Q about how this um this loan will eventually evolve over time. So uh by taking this action tonight is the first step, uh would then put us into a position where we could request reimbursement from the D E Q up to the sixteen point five million dollar amount. Uh and then the whole loan would get um repackaged into a twenty-year loan with a two point seven five percent interest rate. Uh there will be council action at that time. You'll have the pass of resolution issuing a bond for that twenty-year loan, uh but that's all what's been planned and expected for. So um this is the first formal step of the city accepting that offer. And then it essentially authorizes the city manager, the treasurer, myself, to execute the project, um prepare contracts for council's approval, go through construction, issue pay applications. So council will see and approve warrant registers and things that will pay these funds and then we will get reimbursed with those with with the D E Q financing. And at the end of that um expense period, when we've finished all the expenses on that project, that's when it will get converted into the twenty-year uh twenty-year term loan. That makes sense? So um that's the summary here and there's a lot of details. Happy to answer any questions uh that you might have.
Thanks for talking to that.
Yeah, yep. This is my first um experience going through the D E Q process, um and so I've learned a lot, but it's been great. We've had a good team. Um Michael Keith and and John McDevitt know their work and they've been really attuned to looking at what's in the best interest of the city. And I would have him here tonight, but I talked to them earlier and told him I could save him the evening.
Okay.
We adopt Resolution twenty-five dash zero six, authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city council to execute the Idaho Department of Environmental Qualities loan offer of up to sixteen point five million dollars and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Second, I get a roll call note, please.
Councilmember Swallow?
Yes.
Councilmember Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilpresident Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilmember Menchazek?
Yes.
Councilmember, everybody?
Yep. Got everyone, we're missing one tonight.
And down here, am I next?
Uh John Powell, that's uh that's kind of the roof on the city hall. Good evening, John.
Good evening, councilmembers. Can you hear me okay?
Loud and clear.
Too loud. Um, okay, well, um I am here to talk about the city hall re-roof uh project. Um city hall's uh roof is in really bad condition. Um it's basically beyond repair at this point, so it's reached the end of its life. Uh we need to re-roof it. Um so we went out for a semi-formal bid process and we did um receive a lowest responsible bidder, which was UPS and Company. Um we are, we want to put on a um some new foam insulation on top of the the roof deck uh because the old foam is part of the current roofing system, so that'll be removed. Uh so we'll put on uh some new um insulation and then a new membrane roof on top of that uh with a thirty-year warranty. Um the work can happen this summer, uh which is great, and we are looking for your approval of the contract um with UPS and Company. Um are there any questions about it?
Anybody? None for me.
No, I guess city hall uh will continue functioning as city hall for the next thirty years or or yeah, there you go, probably not. But the building has to serve the public, so or I mean, whatever the continued use is, so.
Yeah, it needs to keep functioning and if we don't redo the roof, um that'll be a problem. Um we are getting uh small leaks currently, so well, not currently, but occasionally. Um so definitely needs So it definitely needs to be done.
Motion?
I move we select Upson Company as responsible, responsive low bidder and approve their contract with Upson Company for the re-roof of McCall City Hall and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Second?
It's been made in second. I get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Thrower?
Yes.
Council President Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilmember Machesek?
Yes.
Right, motion carries. Fix the roof.
Thank you.
All right, Nathan, you're back up for a couple.
Okay, so this is the first of three leases. Bill Nichols has been with staff every step of the way on this issue. Not been easy. What we've been doing with the city over the past 10-plus years is leasing our heavy equipment, particularly loaders, skid steers, and graders, mostly because of the high cost of these pieces of equipment. Secondly, because the technology changes, and it's very important to have certain expertise within our mechanics office, our mechanics shop, but also because of the importance of warranties and the relationship that we've built with Caterpillar in particular over many years in that we have a very strong reputation with Caterpillar on taking care of our equipment, communicating with them directly. And that becomes even more reflective in their commitments and their willingness to lease equipment to us. So we have the first of our three leases in front of you tonight, which I'll be presenting, is for the Streets Department, and it's for a 950 loader. Historically, we've gone for five-year leases, because it was that comfortable term period where Caterpillar was comfortable doing that, and the city could get decent financing costs for that that worked within our budget. Interest rates have gone up, and it's been very difficult to kind of keep up with the increase that that's creating. Some of our initial leases, we were able to trade in older pieces of equipment. We've kind of cashed in on all those resources. And so what we've been working with, particularly in the Streets Department, is an opportunity to extend those leases a bit further out, because the equipment can withstand the time, the hours that we put on this machinery, and we can get better pricing, because it's over a seven-year term instead of a five-year term. These leases are interesting in that they're not your typical vehicle lease, where you lease for a few years and return it. This is a rent-to-own document. And so the expectation is that the city would buy this piece of equipment at the end of the seven-year period. But working with Western States and Caterpillar, Western States is the local distributor of Caterpillar equipment. They've provided us a buyback letter saying they will buy the piece of equipment on behalf of the city, so we don't have to. So then you have the financer, which is, in this case, Cat Financial. Bill Nichols worked diligently with Cat Financial to ensure that this lease will meet state requirements, which was challenging, because working with Caterpillar corporate is not easy. But thank you, Bill, for all that time and diligence in communicating both the Forest and myself and to Kurt Wolf why those things were important. So we've gotten through that. What you have in front of you is very consistent with what we've done in the past. The only difference is that we're going for a seven-year lease with this Cat 950 loader. Happy to answer any questions.
Second?
Good.
We take a turn. I'll go. I move we adopt Resolution 25-04, authorizing the mayor to enter into, on behalf of the City of McCall, governmental equipment lease purchase agreement and supplemental documents between the City of McCall and Caterpillar Financial Services Corporation for a 950 loader for fiscal year 25-31, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Second?
Motion has been made in second. I get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Thrower?
Yes.
Councilmember Machesek?
Yes.
Council President Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Right, motion carries. On to the next one.
Yeah, so shorter version this time. I'm representing the Parks Department tonight on behalf of Kurt Wolf, who couldn't attend tonight. So Kurt, this is the first of two leases for the Parks Department. They're both for tracked skid steers. These tracked skid steers they use to take care of snow removal, to take care of your parks and pathways. And their existing leases are up for renewal. So these leases will replace those existing leases for equipment. Same conditions apply, same discussion and correspondence happen. Cat Financial will be the financer of this lease, and Bill Nichols has worked with them in similar fashion to ensure these meet state standards. Happy to answer any questions.
This is a seven-year lease as well?
It is not. It's a five-year lease.
Questions?
Make a motion to adopt Resolution 25-02, authorizing the mayor to enter into, on behalf of the city, governmental equipment lease agreement and supplemental documents between the City of McCall and Caterpillar Financial Services Corporation fiscal year 25 to 2029, for a Cat 255 wheeled skid steer, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Second?
Motion has been made in second for a tracked skid steer. Can I get a roll call vote?
That was for the wheeled skid steer.
Yeah, it's Councilman Machesek, you're correct. There's actually, the first one's for a wheeled, and I was incorrect, the second one's for a tracked.
This one says, oh yeah, okay, wheeled. I was looking at the wrong one.
It's okay.
Councilmember Machesek?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Council President Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilmember Thrower?
Yes.
Motion carries. Onto the tracked skid steer.
Yes, thank you. So, very similar documents to the one you just reviewed. This is for a Cat 262 tracked skid steer. And one of the things I haven't mentioned is that the way we meet the state procurement rules is Caterpillar is required to provide contractor pricing for the value of this equipment through a joint purchasing agreement process. So that's well-understood in advance. They submit these costs annually through this joint purchasing agreement. And because that, what that does is it gives best pricing to government agencies. So one would ask, you know, "Why aren't you putting out this out for bids?" And you might get something from John Deere, whoever. But because all of those companies have put in their best pricing, the state allows the city or counties or state agencies to use that pricing, because that's considered a competitive bid process. So I don't want the council to walk away thinking we're exclusive with Cat and we didn't go through a process that's been vetted. That process has been vetted through the state, through their joint purchasing agreement. And it helps us, because we get discounted pricing because of that. And there are similar joint purchasing agreements out there for buying toilet paper and buying all different kinds of things. This is just for vehicles and equipments.
That was outlined in the first agenda bill, too.
Right.
Actually, I have a question that relates to all of them. Do we need any assistance from Caterpillar in terms of maintenance?
We certainly do. So we have a very detailed maintenance agreement, where we're obligated and required to do routine maintenance at certain hourly intervals. All of this equipment has computers on them that communicate back to Caterpillar. So if something goes wrong, Caterpillar knows about it. And we have, we're required to take oil samples and do a bunch of diagnostics and preventative maintenance. But when we have a big issue, like a drive train goes out, or we had some camera issues with one of our loaders just this year, that's where we call in Caterpillar, because that type of equipment's warranted by Caterpillar, and they send up their service truck. And he's probably backing up behind my window at least once a week. So it's a very iterative process, and it's been very successful due to the confidence we have working with them. But then that's also reflective in our mechanic, our chief mechanic does a great job and has a good working relationship with Caterpillar as well.
I initially thought that price is not very, you know, it's so reasonable per year for the amount we use them, but then you think you get some additional, you also have the security that the $10,000 maintenance thing is on them.
Correct.
Am I on the right one? Ready for this? 25-03. I'm on the tracked one right now, okay? I move, okay, Julie, you got it? Okay, I move we adopt Resolution 25-03, adopt Resolution, oh, it's in there twice. I move we adopt Resolution 25-03, authorize the mayor to enter into, on behalf of the City of McCall, a government equipment lease agreement and supplemental documents between the City of McCall and Caterpillar Financial Services Corporation fiscal years 25-2029, for a Cat 262 tracked skid steer, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Second?
Motion has been made in second. Can I get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Thrower?
Yes.
Council President Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilmember Machesek?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thanks, Nathan. You bet.
We've reached the end of the line, the business agenda. S E J, you want to talk to us about upcoming meeting?
Yeah, so the upcoming meeting schedule, I made the changes to it that we discussed at the council retreat. I changed your tentative first of the month, first Thursday of the month meeting to the third Thursday of the month, with the understanding that it would be primarily used for land use public hearings, but it can also be used for other things if there aren't any land use public hearings. And then I wanted just to confirm with everybody that the March 10th meeting, a joint meeting with the Dallas County Commissioners, will be in this room from 3:00 to 5:00 on March 10th.
So are you going to take that off? Take that off? It still shows the February 10th.
Yes, the newer version that I have. I moved it. Now, I think there hasn't been many changes, so just changed, yeah, now, first Thursday of the month to the third Thursday of the month.
But right now we have meetings scheduled for February 13th, 27th, and 28th.
And 20th.
But we don't have, do we actually have something right now?
We don't have anything there yet, but it's there tentatively February.
Thank you.
You have any questions? We'll be back in this room tomorrow at 9:00 to go through the local option tax streets ordinance.
Anything else?
Nope.
Can we call it?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, adjourned. Somebody said it might go out of tradition here.
Yeah. Yeah. Yes.